Good evening. The July 25th meeting of the Evans City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Suffolkin.
Here.
Councilmember Revelle. Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Herakaris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Wynn. Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
With seven members having answered the call of the roll, we have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work. We begin with my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are two. First of all, this Thursday evening, the 28th, at 7:00 PM, both here in the council chambers and also on the city's YouTube channel, will be a town hall discussion with the candidate for city manager, whose name is Carol Mitten. There's a forum that's been circulating where you can submit questions online. And folks who are here in person will also have the opportunity to submit questions here for that. I encourage everyone to participate. Next, on August 2nd, which is a week from tomorrow, is National Night Out Celebration, which will be done a little bit differently this year than in past years. There will be a single, large celebration along the lakefront at the Arrington Lagoon with all kinds of festivities and food trucks and what have you. From 4:00 to 9:00 PM. We certainly encourage the whole community to come out and join us for that. That concludes my announcements. And the next item on our agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
No announcements tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the communications from the city clerk.
No announcements.
Thank you. This brings us now to public comment. This evening, we have, I believe, 10 people seeking to give public comments. We'll begin, as always, with those who have signed up in person to speak in person, of whom there is only one. So we begin... Oh, and so everyone will be given three minutes this evening. We begin with Mike Fasilco.
Thank you. So the first item for me is SP1, which is the 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which, in the Small Point Department, was denied to me through the FOIA process, but showed up on tonight's agenda. And the attachment was found attached. So what's important about this document, and no one seems to ever want to talk about it, is the total city debt, which is shown on page 150, stated as $581,4831. Now, that includes the direct debt, bonds, notes, et cetera, of $392,726,000, plus other debt we share with other government agencies are portioned, another $188 million. So the bottom line is, we already have a debt of $581 million as of the end of 2021. Tonight alone, based on all the agenda items, the loans, the geo bond discussions, the future master plan of the service center, that's another $100 million, over and above that $581. And no mention of climate change action plan in there, Councilman Nusma. So my question is, when does that get factored in? And should we not hold on some of these big, large budget items that are being proposed until the budget season starts, when this can all be talked about in one piece? The other item I want to speak to tonight, with the time I have left, is the city manager selection process, which we know has been flawed. All three times that you've tried it, it has been flawed. And it seems to me, with the announcement of last week, since then, and just a few days, there's been kind of relentless reporting going on through social media, through real reporting. It comes from Urbana. There seems to be a lot of reported controversial and actually confrontational issues between the proposed city manager and Urbana residents. Seems to me the selection process should slow and maybe freeze any negotiations that are going on until the community has much more time to examine the candidate's record. It seems it's all happening too quickly now.
15 seconds.
It went on for months and months. Delays and delays. Candidates dropping out. And all of a sudden, you know, it's coming too quickly. We have a very trustworthy, very responsive... We have an excellent interim city manager in Luke Stowe.
Time.
I think we should let Luke take care of business or to speak until the citizens, maybe in the short term, maybe in the long term.
Thank you very much.
But we should give more time to the process that we have not had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we move to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Ray Friedman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Biss and City Council and interim city manager. First, I wanted to apologize to Luke Stowe for not congratulating him on him being promoted to interim city manager. So congratulations. I'd like to tell you how disappointed we are at the continued lack of transparency and accountability you've shown us. You've chosen one candidate for city manager without any discussions or meetings with residents. The background on this candidate is widely available. And I do have concerns. But my question still is, and always has been, what happened to the discussions and input from the residents? And what happened to the discussions with residents on all the other candidates? I would have to imagine you had more than one candidate to interview. So I want to say that Mayor Biss is absolutely correct when he said that this work cannot be successful without meaningful and significant public input. So can we put those words into proper use and have public input with the discussions and the process on any major decisions that are going on here in Evanston? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tricia Conley.
Good evening, interim city manager, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza and City Council. My name is Tricia Conley. I live in the Second Ward. I'm here tonight to ask exactly what is the process for hiring of a city manager here in Evanston? It has been stated that no decision has been made yet and won't be made until after the town hall, when the residents hear from the candidate. I'm wondering if you all got the memo that the mayor of Urbana had wished Carol Mitten goodbye and best wishes? It remains a real concern that we still have no streamlined process for the hiring for the most powerful position in this city. So tonight, this is the night we're all supposed to come out and give you a sense of our temperature on the one and only candidate for this position in Evanston? The town hall is just a performative piece showing that there was a public viewing process and Q&amp;A. And then you'll just sign up the candidate? Is that what we're to expect here? Not sure why we'd been sold that the sky is falling and we must hurry up and get a warm body in the seat of the city manager. It sends a message that we don't have capable people that can see us through until we find at least one other candidate to give us some glimmer of a choice here. It also causes me to wonder, Mayor Biss, with your real push on, "We gotta get this done yesterday", do you have other plans for yourself coming up? Because it kind of feels to me that way. I'm looking at all of you who ran on racial equity, public engagement and reimagining policing right here, right now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dorian Price.
Hi, greetings. It's been a while, so I'm forgetting how to do the formality stuff. So pardon me. And Mayor Biss and the City Council. This is when you try to get something and you can't read it. Okay. I totally agree about Luke. In fact, I met Luke after a really long time of not seeing him and realized how good a person he is in terms of relationship building. And right now, we're going through all this turmoil in terms of how or when we're going to find a new city manager. I agree with all the other speakers and probably more you'll be hearing from or have already heard from, that Luke is perfectly capable of being a really good and conscientious person who is really good at tech and is good at people at the same time, which is a very unusual combination and very valuable. My comment is basically, Mitten is wrong, which I wrote to Mayor, for Evanston and its future. And Carol Mitten's record on transparency and racial justice shows she is not a good fit for Evanston. We depend on many learnings together under your leadership, Mayor Biss, of a proudly diverse community... And I say that and emphasize proudly diverse community, with remarkably generous hearts and grit. Unlike pictured as we don't have grit, we have lots of grit to thrive. And all it takes is the right leadership. So thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the list of people seeking to give comment in person. So we now move to those who signed up to comment online. The first of whom is Mary Rosinski, who will be followed by Tina Vanderwacker and then Debbie Boilev.
Point of...
Hi, thank you, Mayor Biss and interim city manager, Mr. Stowe and Council. I actually have just three quick comments I'd like to make. One is, I agree with everything that everyone said about the city manager. I think it was supposed to be the same as we started out with the other managers interviewing. And then this last manager, there wasn't the same public engagement whatsoever. And I think that if you were bringing someone, one person with many controversial issues... And I don't think it's just someone who's mad at her down in Urbana. I think there's a lot of issues elsewhere. And we don't need to bring someone who's controversial right now. I think we should, you know, let Mr. Stowe do what he's doing. He knows the city well. And then take the time and bring in someone who's right. Because when you break down public trust is when we have all these extra meetings and controversy in the city. And we don't need that. The second of all, DAPR on P5. I don't know if that should be dismantled or not. But I do know that I think DAPR shouldn't be recommending anything. And if they have... Unless they have a project before them that meets all zoning standards, then they recommend. But for staff to recommend, without public input, a project with variances because they think that's okay is, again, putting staff in front of the process and not letting public input have much meaning. Which also goes to the next thing of P4. And I'm asking, that's the whole Central Street Master Plan? Again, that feels like very much of an overreach of staff to start dismantling a plan that was put together by the city to the tune of $200,000 with the zoning administrator Duncan at Consultants and the Central Street neighbors. And a couple hundred people were involved at that time. And the staff had made that recommendation. So all of a sudden, to try to take seven properties and do a map amendment without any cause, it seems to me that there's something else going on and we don't need to do it. If there's a good reason and people have been asking for it and there's been public discussion, that's an open and transparent. But right now, there is an issue with Sarkis, who wants to keep their tent, and that's not within the zoning. So let's deal with that. But there was no recommendation to be able to take seven properties out of the Master Street Plan and rezonate. And the final thing is, I was shocked to see a potential of $45 to $95 million on SP1. I'm very curious as to what that's about. Because at the last meeting, you guys are talking about making revenue from billboard. Because we have to make revenue? I would say, we need to stop spending money we don't have. Plan a free project and then save the money and bond appropriate. We have capital improvements programs. And I'm always shocked that stuff gets just thrown in at the last moment and then gets approved. So let's budget wisely. Let's spend only what we need to, and let's plan our spending. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have a late-breaking in-person public comment. Sign up, so we'll return to that part of the order and then go back to online. Betsy Wilson.
Good evening. And I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you. I am a founder of the organization Evanston 2. And we're a group of citizens who came together because we were concerned about the sexual misconduct that happened in the Parks and Rec Department and the subsequent year-long cover-up by the city of Evanston. And I do want to acknowledge, I think the report was great. The report with the investigators, I appreciated their thoroughness. And I appreciate that I'm seeing changes as we go along. So I thank you all for that. I worry that we're about to mess up the most important lesson. I think the thing that we need to take away from that debacle, that I know we were all horrified by, the thing that we need to take away from that debacle is that transparency in our city government is essential. So therefore, I think it's important that we not hire Carol Mitten as our city manager. She... Her history, her uncontroverted history shows that she has taken steps to avoid FOIA. She's taken steps to circumvent the Open Meetings Act. And she's taken steps to shut down public discussion. She's obviously not the leader we need to ensure that our city government operations are transparent and open to the public, an assurance that is essential to avoid another horrific experience like we saw happen in the Parks and Rec Department. So please, let's take our time and find someone who represents the values of the city. And Mittens does not do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We now return to the online commenters, beginning with Tina Vanderwacker, then Debbie Boilev, followed by Kathy Rusbenda.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Biss, City Council and interim city manager, Stowe. Thanks so much for your time. My name is Tina Vanderwacker. I'm the outgoing director of Covenant Nursery School and the incoming director of the Evanston Early Childhood Council. I'm speaking tonight in support of the $500,000 ARPA funding for the Childcare Workforce Bonus and Retention Program to help support and recognize early childhood educators for their work during the pandemic. The country has relied on early childhood staff and full-day programs, home-based childcare and part-day programs to provide an essential service throughout the pandemic so that people can get back to work. The COVID-19 pandemic has been extremely stressful for the early childhood teachers and staff who've provided in-person care since June of 2020. Not only have they put their own health at risk on a daily basis, they also knowingly put their families at risk as well. While many professionals were able to work from the safety of their homes, early childhood professionals provided hands-on intimate care even before there was a vaccine, recognizing the importance of in-person learning and care for the optimal development of our community's most vulnerable individuals and as a support to families. Due to the very limited resources of all early childhood programs, staff were not compensated commensurate with the risk they were asked to take. The Evanston Early Childhood Council wholeheartedly supports using ARPA funds to establish an early childhood bonus program. I believe tonight you may be discussing some parameters of the program and wanted to provide a little more background information about Evanston's early childhood programs. Some of the Evanston Early Childhood Council's programs serve a large number of economically disadvantaged families from the Evanston area through CCAP, which is the Childcare Assistance Program, Preschool for All, Early Head Start, Head Start and other programs. However, there are also many nonprofit programs that serve low to moderate income families for whom household income information is not collected and where many moderate income families are represented. Full-day childcare costs anywhere from $1,200 to $1,600 per month versus a part-day program that costs between $300 to $500 per month. These days, more and more families are using a wide variety of childcare arrangements that might include family or friends for part of the time and a center-based or home-based program for part of the time. The EEECC believes strongly that who our programs serve should not be a qualifier to access to this bonus program. All early childhood educators, by the nature of how programs are able to pay them, unfortunately fall within the ARPA-specified income guidelines. Early childhood is one of the lowest-paid professions. Direct funding to all early childhood programs for one-time contributions to retirement accounts, bonuses, or for one-time investments in salaries is critical to sustaining the early childhood workforce and mitigating staff turnover in all of Evanston's early childhood programs. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Debbie Boilev, who will be followed by Kathy Rusbenda and then Meg Welch. Is Debbie in the Zoom?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mayor Biss, and thank you, City Council members. My name is Debbie Boilev, and I'm the executive director of Warren Cherry Preschool. I'm a member of the Evanston Early Childhood Council Steering Committee. And I'm here to represent all of the Evanston Part Day early childhood programs. As you discuss the parameters of the Childcare Workforce Bonus and Retention Program to help support and recognize early childhood educators for their work during the pandemic, we would like to highlight a few points for you to consider. If the bonus pay program was intended to recognize the additional health risks from COVID-19 by childcare workers, all early childhood staff, regardless of the income of the families they serve, have put themselves at personal risk of contracting COVID-19 since the pandemic began. All early childhood staff are woefully underpaid, and most of these individuals would be considered a low-income bracket. Evanston's part-day preschool programs are nonprofit organizations. Part-day programs budgets do not allow them to offer health benefits. Many of the families served in part-day programs are single-parent households, households with two working parents or parents that are students. Some of these families have not qualified for CCAP because they don't work enough hours. Part-day programs do not receive federal or state funding to subsidize their budgets. During the pandemic, full-day programs that serve low-income families received State of Illinois Childcare Restoration Grants to help them remain open and pay their teachers. Part-day programs did not qualify for this funding simply because we're not open enough hours. Many part-day programs offer financial assistance, often full scholarships at their own expense, since they receive no federal or state funding. The programs fundraise extensively and apply for grants to offer these scholarships. As an example, Cherry Preschool has at least 10% of its families receiving financial assistance. This year, our scholarship budget is over $80,000. In addition, our programs include children with developmental delays and learning disabilities. Inclusion aid support and an inclusion director are self-funded because of the strong belief that all children be able to attend a quality early childhood program regardless of a family's ability to pay. Excluding part-day program staff from a COVID-related bonus retention program at a time when many of us are losing staff to low wages, little or no benefits and difficult working conditions is sending the message to our programs and to our staff that their sacrifice doesn't count. We hope you will consider all of these factors and show your gratitude to everyone that has worked in a childcare center or home during these very difficult COVID years. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kathy Rusbenda, who will be followed by Meg Welch and then Cecile McHugh.
Thank you, Mayor Biss and council members. My name is Kathy Rusbenda, and I'm a resident of the Seventh Ward. My comments today relate to the search for our next city manager. I'm urging council members and the mayor not to vote for the single candidate that's been put forth, Ms. Mitten, without greater time for public input into this decision. I fear that the town hall scheduled for this Thursday is merely for show and that Evanston is going to repeat its past mistakes and hire someone who is not fully committed to transparency, equity and inclusion, and additionally, without adequate public input that many of us have been calling for. The prior two times we've been presented with finalists, we've been told that a forum or town hall was our opportunity to provide public input. However, it didn't seem that public input was actually fully considered or valued. In the case of the search to replace Wally Bobkowitz, Ms. Storey had to herself argue for a national search and opportunity for public input when the former mayor wanted to just appoint her. There ultimately was a national search in that case and a public forum with the three finalists. However, the vote was taken the very next day to appoint Ms. Storey in an executive session that was closed to the public. One council member characterized this hire as relying too much on personal relationships with Ms. Storey and not enough on what residents were asking for. Please don't repeat this mistake. With the following search, which led to two finalists being presented to the public, there was at least a survey follow-up to the town hall asking for public input into the decision process. Yet it also, in that case, the candidate preferred by the public, Mr. Pocher, was not offered the position. And here we are again, this time being presented with only a single finalist to choose from. It's not clear what kind of search was conducted or if a new search was conducted at all. With each iteration of this process, it has become less transparent with less public input into the decision than the time before. After Ms. Storey's resignation, an article published in the Evanston Roundtable on December 7, 2021 quoted Mayor Biss as stating, "The city is committed to engaging in a national search to find the best possible person to be our next city manager and to do this with very significant transparency, public input and stakeholder engagement." Mayor Biss and council members, I'd like to hold you to this and request that either you obtain more significant public input from residents and stakeholders than the single-planned town hall. But also, I request that you do what the mayor originally said you would all do, and that's to have a national search with significant transparency, public input and stakeholder engagement to find a candidate that is actually the best possible fit for our city. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. The next...
If I can just point of order, just because I think it reflects on the city when there's confusion about a vote that was taken. I was the clerk at the time, not on the council. But there was just no vote taken in executive session to hire Ms. Storey. And I think it's important that the community knows that because if folks are thinking that this council or the previous council was taking votes in executive session, that could really be damaging to trust in the community. And it's just, it's not true. Folks decided, you know, generally that Storey was the choice, but the vote took place in public as all votes would take place. I was clerk at the time, and many of us were here. And I don't think that we would have allowed an actual vote to take place in executive session. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Meg Welch, who will be followed by Cecile McHugh and then Betty Esther. Is Meg Welch in the Zoom? I seem as well as you are in the Zoom. Are you able to unmute yourself?
Yes, am I unmuted now?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm speaking today to address the council members and you, Mayor Biss, just to say that there is no emergency with the city manager hire. We are in good hands with the person that we know from experience, Mr. Stowe. And it is quite concerning that it's been narrowed down to a single candidate, which, you know, gives the impression that perhaps it's a foregone conclusion that this is going to be the ultimate city manager. And as others have said, there are some very concerning features in her background. There are some boxes that many residents want ticked that this candidate absolutely does not tick. And there are some extremely concerning parts of her history. So it's quite baffling why this person would have been brought forward. We've seen some really stellar Black women candidates in the past. And there's a lot of quality people out there. There is no emergency. And please do not bring this candidate to a vote at this time. We would like you to go back. We're sure that there are many other candidates that express interest in serving Evanston. But don't just hoist one upon us and then act like it was-- you know, you picked the cream of the crop. This is not the cream of the crop. You know, at least, let's look at some other alternatives. There is no emergency. And no matter what editorials in the Chicago Tribune say that are remarkably like the opinion of the League of Women Voters, I really doubt the Chicago Tribune Editorial Board came up with that opinion all on their own. Anyway, I urge you not to vote on this candidate. Let's just slow down, look at some other candidates at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cecile McHugh, who will be followed by Betty Esther.
Betty, I'm speaking in opposition to granting a liquor license to Shop Now. Shop Now is on Maple, around the corner from the Garnett Street block, known to have so many disturbances from power parties that a council member recently referred to this street as being "Like Rush Street." The store is very near to other residential buildings well-known to have nuisance noise, including the Link. Having liquor being so easily accessible in this neighborhood around Enyu invites abuse of the rules regarding sale, purchase, and provision of alcohol to those underage. The city found Shop Now to have sold tobacco to the underage in the past. How can we now trust the store will sell alcohol only to those of age? Evanston requires owners and operators of an establishment to be granted a liquor license to be of good character and reputation. However, the owner, site manager, or all of the above, it's confusing, of Shop Now, Mr. Nair, was charged with battery and arrested at Shop Now's Evanston address. Additionally, a check of Cook County court records shows numerous cases with Mr. Nair as the defendant, including an eviction case and breach of contract cases. Additionally, the owner/site manager seems to have given so little care to the visual appearance of the storefront. Weeds over a foot tall are growing. The building is in disrepair. The store isn't eyesore unlike any I can think of elsewhere in Evanston. Evanston requires that the owners of an establishment to be granted a liquor license live in Evanston. Online, I find only Chicago addresses, no Evanston addresses, associated with Mr. Nair and with Ms. Katry listed on the application as a site manager and 100% owner, respectively. But based upon Cook County records, seem to be or were married. The store's application states the store is required to be within the retail package store area in Evanston, but the application shows a map for the retail package store area that does not include the address of Shop Now. And the boundaries of the retail-- yes, the retail package store area, as defined in the city code definition, does not include Shop Now's address. Please consider these points and closely examine the application and ownership before giving Shop Now a liquor license, which would be a detriment to the students and the university, to the surrounding neighborhood, and to the city, outweighing the benefit of whatever additional taxes might be collected from the sale of liquor here. I attended over Zoom the Liquor Control Review Board meeting at which granting the Shop Now license and the other licenses under consideration this evening were discussed. However, as I mentioned during public comments at that meeting, the audio was terrible at the start, and what was said became unintelligible. I raised my hand to report this, but it was not recognized and chat was disabled. Video and minutes have not been posted on the site. Could a vote regarding the liquor licenses under consideration tonight be postponed until a video and/or minutes are posted? Of particular interest to me is a discussion regarding Shop Now and also the residency of the owners of all the establishments. I'd like to confirm that the owners of all these establishments do reside in Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The final speaker is Ms. Betty Esther.
Is it possible to note for Ms. McHugh that that item failed in committee? So it's not even on the agenda for our council meeting? Which may bring you some delight, Ms. McHugh.
Yes, it does. I'm so sorry. But regarding the other establishments, then, I'd like to confirm that those owners do reside in Evanston. Thank you. Sorry again.
Thank you. Is Ms. Betty Esther in the Zoom?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Good evening to the residents of the community and our elected official. I'm here to ask you not to vote on Item H3, H4, and H5. Alderman Reed had brought these up in the Human Service Relation Committee, and they was discussed and everything. And he was trying to come to a community meeting held by CNT. And the residents didn't see why. They understood the codes and things, and they felt that they should be deleted from the code and we just go by what the state says. But I see they hear for both for tonight. I ask you not to vote on them, as we told him again. The people need to be educated, to understand exactly what do these codes mean and how are they really interpreted. We would have liked to have had meetings with the legal department and someone from the police department that explain these codes and things to the community so that they could understand, like, okay, disobeying the police. Is it a violation when the police asks someone, "Do you know such and such?", and the person answers, "No", and then the police asks you again, and the person still say, "No", and then that person is cited as being disobedient to the police? So we need to have these codes explained to the community before you enacted them. And a slight discussion at the Human Services Committee or the council meeting is not a community meeting. And the general comment I have referenced the city manager comment. There has been a lot of communication about this individual that's been passed around in the community. And one thing in there kind of struck me that was odd when she said the city manager and the council made decisions about actions in that community.
Fifteen seconds.
It made me think about what you, Mayor, and the city council responded to a request when we asked you not to rehire the chief editing, and you said that was up to the city manager. So if that was the case, then why are you hiring someone? So who's going to be in charge then? You are the person you're going to hire as the city manager because that person is saying that it is your job, the mayor and the council. So we kind of need to know a little more about what is this person will be doing. We need to see the position, description, that this person will follow. So to keep our trust and to keep working with the community, we need to have more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes this evening's public comment and brings us now to Special Orders of Business. We begin with SP1. Is there a motion with respect to Item SP1?
I move that we accept-- we accept a 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and place it on file.
Second.
Councilmember, Lynn moves that we accept and place on file the 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I believe Councilmember Reed seconded. On this matter, I believe Mr. Desai has a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Sec Council. We have the auditors here to formally present the audit report for the year ending December 31, 2021. And they would just kind of have a brief overview of the audit report, you know, what it contains and what are our results, and then they may answer any questions. So let me introduce Martha Trotter and Dan Berg from our Audit Room of Secach LLP. Go ahead, Martha.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Martha Trotter, partner with Secach LLP. And with me is Dan Berg, another partner and a partner on the City of Evanston's audit engagement. We are here tonight to present to you the results of the annual audit. We have issued the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2021. And I just want to briefly discuss with you. It's quite a large document, over almost 200 pages. Just want to point out to you some key items of interest, summarize the results for you. First and foremost, I would like to acknowledge the assistance that has been given to us throughout the course of the audit by the finance and accounting staff. There is a great deal of information that we request as part of audit procedures to go through all the information and to be able to present to you an annual comprehensive financial report, which has a great deal of information included within it. The finance and accounting staff has been extremely helpful and has worked with us throughout the course of the audit engagement, which started at the start of the year in January, right after the end of the fiscal year. So lots of information has been provided to us. We've had a lot of questions, and they've been very helpful in providing us all the information that was needed in order to issue the annual comprehensive financial report, along with the other reports that are issued as part of the audit, the report to the city council, the management letter, communication of deficiencies, filing with the state comptroller, and filing with the Illinois GATA. So we're grateful for that assistance and for all the information that has been provided to us. A couple items, or a few items to highlight in the annual comprehensive financial report. There is-- in the introductory section, Certificate of Achievement is included in the financial statements. This is on page number, Roman numeral 3. The Certificate of Achievement highlights that the annual comprehensive financial report of the city has been submitted to the GFOA and-- has been issued a certificate of achievement in excellence in financial reporting. The report-- this is for the 2020 fiscal year end. And this highlights that the report meets the standards of the GFOA. And we anticipate the city once again will be issued a similar certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the 2021 fiscal year as well. Following the certificate of achievement is the Letter of Transmittal. This is prepared by finance and accounting staff. If there are no other items of the report that you read through, we highly recommend reading the Letter of Transmittal as well as the Management Discussion and Analysis. These items are prepared by staff and include information as to-- some highlights as to why numbers have changed and give a little bit of color and context, as well as provide comparative current year and prior year results so you can see not just what the balances were ending in 2021, but also the prior year balances. And there's some analytic discussion and review of the results of what drives those changes. Beginning on page 1 and through pages 4 is the Independent Auditor's Report. So this is what many people look to when they receive financial statements. I am pleased to present the-- for the city's annual comprehensive financial report, we were able to issue a clean, unmodified opinion on the financial statements. This is the highest level of assurance that we are able to issue. So once again, great job. And the information presented to you based on our audit procedures in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, we were able to issue the highest level of assurance on these financial statements. The Management's Discussion and Analysis, which I referred to earlier, begins on page MDNA1 and goes through page MDNA8. And as I noted, this includes comparative information as well as some additional context as to what drove the changes to the balances. Following the Management Discussion and Analysis is the basic financial statements, beginning with the Statement of Net Position and Statement of Activities. The Statement of Net Position and Statement of Activities provide to you information on a full accrual basis of accounting. So unlike what you're typically used to seeing on a month-to-month basis, budget versus actual, this includes all long-term assets, capital assets of the city, long-term debt liabilities, information that-- and this is consolidated for governmental activities in total, business-type activities, and total city activities, as well as a presentation of the Evanston Public Library Component Unit. The Statement of Activities on page-- seven and eight. On page 8, you'll note that-- you can note the change in the city's net position for the fiscal year for these separate activities. So in total, the city's net position increased over the prior year net position. Change in net position in total for the city of $50.8 million. Following the Statement of Activities is the Governmental Funds Balance Sheet and the Governmental Funds Income Statement. This is presented to you with the General Fund and Debt Service Fund individually. These are considered major funds of the city, as well as the non-major aggregate remaining funds in total. There are additional statements and schedules and budget versus actual schedules for each of these funds later on in the report in the combining and individual fund financial statements and schedules. So you can look to-- later in the report for individual fund comparison of how the individual funds performed compared to the budgeted expectations. The Governmental Funds Balance Sheet and Governmental Funds Statement of Changes in Revenues, Expenditures, and Fund Balance is presented to you on a modified accrual basis of accounting, which does not include those long-term assets and liabilities that were presented to you on the Statement of Net Position and Statement of Activities. Overall, for governmental funds, there was an increase in the fund balances for the fiscal year in total of $22.2 million. Following the governmental funds presentation are the Enterprise Funds Financial Statements. And you can note that for the Enterprise Funds, page 15, the balance sheet for the Enterprise Funds, total net position for Enterprise Funds of $309-- sorry, $309 million. And of that net position, 289 of that is related to net investment in capital assets, net of related debt. So outside of your long-term capital assets, so your net position that's tied up in capital assets, there's a remaining $20.3 million of net position in the Enterprise Funds in total. The fiduciary fund statements begin on page 19 and end on page 20. And following that are the footnotes to the financial statements. Just to highlight, there is information in the footnotes related to the city's long-term debt obligations, as well as capital asset activity for both governmental activities and business-type activities, as well as component unit information. And as I noted earlier, pages 93 to 134 include the budget versus actual information for all the individual city funds. And finally, another area of interest that you might have, the statistical section, begins on page 134 and is through the end of the report. The statistical section provides a lot of historical information on a 10-year historical basis for a variety of factors associated with the city's financial trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity, demographic and economic information, as well as other-- capacity, debt capacity, demographic and economic information, as well as other operating And that's a highlight, a high-level summary of how you can read through and gather information from this vast document. Any questions on the annual comprehensive financial report?
Thank you very much. Any questions? We begin with Councilmember Kelly.
So, there's a link, but it's, I'm just seeing one page. Am I missing something? I'm sorry.
That was the same question I had.
Because then we can't have any questions. I mean, we can't read that. So I just, I'm sorry, but.
I emailed you the link.
You emailed me the link?
All the financials and the link is posted on the memo. So all the financials are on the city website.
No, it's not on.
There are three reports, separate reports under 2021 financials. On the website, yeah, city website.
Well, what's, no, I can.
The link was because of the length of the report. You know, this is almost 200 pages, so we just provided the link to the city website.
If you'd like, we could forward the bookmarked version that Martha was reading from, or we were trying to follow along with. Back to the meeting, obviously. Okay. We'll send it to Hitesh.
Are there further questions? Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an awful lot of information to digest, and this is like why the finance and budget committee was set up, to actually look at this type of information, digest it, and then report to council. So I'm not sure why we didn't, why this didn't go first to finance and budget committee, but I would just like to make sure that it does get on the agenda for finance and budget committee at our next meeting.
He had intended to be on there, but Hitesh was absent.
Yes, absolutely, but it wasn't ready at the last finance and budgets. And I didn't want to delay the presentation to the city council. When the report is all out, I would rather have it first to the governing board. But they would be joining our next finance and budget committee to go any details or any other questions you might have.
Great. So we'll have an opportunity to take a deep dive and ask some direct questions, with the benefit of our financial expert committee members to kind of walk us through this process. So I'll hold off on my questions until the committee meeting.
And I know this is kind of a pedantic question, but is there any, is there any pressing time limitation on the action of accepting and placing this on file?
I would leave it up to them. Is there any timeline? So I. If the city council is fine with us, staff and us posting it to the state's website, the comptroller requires it to be posted within 180 days, but with a 60-day extension. So we have, we do have some time. It'll be toward the end of August that it'll be needed to be on their website. The GATA filings as well.
Yeah, 30-day extension. So if, yeah, we have, some of the other places, Mayor, we have a 30-day extension with the state. So yeah, obviously, we need it by the July end. One more, yeah, week, I guess.
Councilmember Wen.
Well, I would suggest that we go ahead and post it, because our point is to discuss what they, what they have found, where there's nothing that we can do that will alter this.
Yeah, no, we have to post it, right? We're, there's only one more, even given the 60-day grace period, there's only one more council meeting between now and then, it's August 8th, there's no sense in.
Right. So I think by accepting it and placing it on file, then, and then we'll be discussing it at finance and budget.
Okay.
Rather than.
In that case, is there further, further discussion? All right, so then, given what was explained, which is that there will be a more robust discussion of this at finance and budget, which may or may not lead to a further report to council and opportunities for the discussion here. In the meantime, will the clerk please take the role on the action of accepting this and placing it on file, consistent with the fact that it's got to be posted to the state at most, I guess, 240 days into the year, which is going to be sometime in mid to late August?
Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Hidaf Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the comprehensive annual financial report is accepted and placed on file. This brings us to item SP2, which is just an item for discussion, so no motion is required. I believe we begin with the presentation, is that correct?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Biss, members of the city council, Clerk Mendoza, and interim city manager. So my name is Stephanie Levine. I'm a senior project manager with the Public Works Agency, and I'm here to talk to you this evening about the Service Center. So just for orientation purposes, we are, we're kind of like right up here. So the Service Center is pretty much kitty corner to where we are. This is Green Bay, and this is Simpson up here. And this facility is really the heart of all of our field operations. It was constructed in 1980, so it's about 42 years old. The buildings that make up the complex are about 140,000 square feet, and it sits on about a six-acre site. It's made up of four interrelated buildings, and then there's a couple storage buildings. So the first building is Building A, and this is the fleet building. This houses all of our fleet operations. This is where we service all our vehicles. Building B is kind of the central operations building. This is where all the administration, this is where all the staff come to meet. This building has warehouse spaces and workshops as well. Building C, this is where our parking services is housed, and it also is a bridge between the B building and the parking deck, which is at D building. D building is, again, a parking deck above, and then at the ground floor is where we have all of our vehicles stored. F building is a series of open-sided storage bays for bulk material. And then the salt dome, of course, stores all of our road salt. And then we also have two fuel islands, which fuel all of our city fleet. And this is, you know, this building really is the heart of everything. So all of the streets, sanitation, greenways, forestry, traffic, fleet, facilities management, all these things happen out of this operation. And so without it, all the good things that are happening out in the field can't happen. So it's been 42 years, and so we wanted to take a look at the facility and really get a sense of where things are going and what we need to do to bring it up to modern standards. So this master plan's goals are really to assess the conditions and develop a modernization strategy that looks at how to address deficiencies and also respond to our Climate Action and Resilience Plan, the CARP Plan. And also look at some of our storage deficiencies, which I'll touch on a little later. So we've been working with a consultant, Greeley and Hanson is the consultant, and they've done a lot of looks, taken a lot of deep dive into the building, and these are kind of their primary issues that they've found. First, you know, we just haven't had the resources to invest in the facility since its original construction. And so there's been some physical deterioration. And because of its age, it's also just not really well-suited to adapt to CARP. This is a building that was adapting to 1980 environment, and obviously, things have changed quite a bit since 1980. And so just an example of what that means is, or how that's manifesting itself, if you talk about D building, again, that's that big parking structure. The construction of that building is maybe not ideal, and it's a largely precast structure. Over the years, well, in its general nature, it's a very flexible building. So as you're driving on it, it moves and flexes. And so all the joints move and flex with that. And over time, those joints fail, water infiltrates into that, deteriorates the concrete, and then you can see what kind of happens here. Concrete falls down, and we have failures. And so over the last 10 years, we've had to run in there a number of times and do emergency repairs, where we've had failures like this occur. In one situation, we even had a section of the deck fall. Another issue we're facing is just inadequate storage. You saw the site's kind of got this triangular configuration, so there's really nowhere to expand. We also, we currently use the recycling center as a storage facility, that building and the yard, and there's been discussion over the years about selling that. So losing that storage is a significant concern for staff. As you can see in the photograph in the lower right, a lot of our equipment gets stored outside, so it's exposed to weather all the time, which means it deteriorates faster, and we have to end up replacing it more frequently than we would like to. And it seems like equipment just keeps getting bigger. And as we've talked about electrifying our fleet, we have to look at charging stations and things of that nature, and so we're just, you know, we're getting squeezed for space. Other major issues that we're facing, HVAC and electrical systems, these are largely original to the facility, so they're 42 years old. You can see in the upper right photo that the switchgear, this is the original switchgear for the buildings, 42 years old. This is actually in D building. All the switchgear for the building is in D building. That's the building that we have all the water infiltration and deterioration issues of the most significant. You can see it's pretty severely corroded. There are no replacement parts for this kind of equipment. Things like our HVAC equipment also is original. The refrigerants that are used are all being phased out. You know, we can't, we can't easily repair these, repair these items. Another issue that we're facing is our fuel systems are really beyond their useful life. We've had a lot of failures. We are constantly repairing these. They're, they're down a lot, and so there's just a general lack of reliability. There's also some safety concerns. There's a lot of traffic and yard congestion. This is particularly apparent during snow operations. There's some concerns about chemical storage, where it's stored, how it's stored. There's some site security concerns. We also have inadequate emergency power generation on site. This temporary generator you see in the lower right, this powers our data center. It's actually a temporary generator. And just as an example, we don't have emergency power generation supplied to the doors on all of our fleet vehicles, fleet vehicle bays. So if there was power outage, we actually can't get our fleet vehicles out of the bays, out or in. And then again, because the building was built in 1980, it can't respond, or doesn't respond to ADA, because ADA was enacted, I think, 11 years later. So our consultant has come up with two kind of basic strategies for us to just kind of consider. These are really high-level strategies. The first one is to, the big difference between these two is how, what you do with D building. Okay? In both cases, we're talking about modernizing the complex. In option one, we're talking about repairing D building, and then in the event that we are going to sell the recycling center, build a construction, or build a storage building at James Park. Option two is modernize the building, but replace and expand D building entirely. Now I'm going to show you a little bit more detail, but, and they're going to, you're going to see some costs here as well. Just a word of caution about the costs, they're really, really high level. And the consultant feels we can really only use them for strategic purposes, strategic planning purposes. And they feel there's a really very wide range of accuracy. So the numbers you see, the consultant feels it could be 50% lower or 100% higher than the numbers you're going to see. So you really have to kind of stand way back and think big picture. So option one, this is, again, the option where we're really talking about renovating the buildings, including D building. In this option, we would also reconstruct F building, that smaller storage facility. Their estimate of the cost, and we're kind of giving you the without CARP and the with CARP, just so you can kind of see that there is a cost increase, an incremental increase to meet our CARP goals. So without CARP, it's around 22 million. With CARP, it's around 34 million. And then to build this new storage facility at James Park is around 10 and 1/2 million. So a little bit more detail about option one. This would include consolidating and reconstructing the fuel islands. So instead of building two fuel islands, we would just build one. We feel we can consolidate and put the one just at the north side. We would deal with the site paving issues. We would improve the site security. We would construct some covered racks at the south to take care, you know, protect our snowplows in the, in the summer months. And then CARP items, we can install photovoltaic panels at various locations through the Upgrades for Building A, B, and C would include updates to the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, ADA deficiencies, replacing the roof, windows, and doors, and providing some office reconfiguration. And then the CARP items in this section would be expanding the electrical service. We just don't have adequate electricity to add fleet electrification or to change over our mechanical systems to electrical systems. You know, the idea here is we want to decarbonize. We want to stop using fossil fuels, so we have to electrify our mechanical systems. And then again, installing more solar panels. For this option, again, D building, we would be trying to repair it. And what their structural engineers recommending is that we try to stiffen the structure so that it's not flexing and moving as much, so that these joints are lasting a lot longer, we're not getting as much water infiltration, and we can protect all of the assets. We've also talked about adding like a roof system to the ramp. The original design for this building included a roof at the ramp, but it was value engineered out, or we believe it was value engineered out. But the ramp is where we experience a lot of problems, water infiltration. So we'd like to actually put that feature back into the building. We'd also look at upgrading similarly to the other buildings, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, address ADA, windows and doors, and then similar CARP-related For Building F, we actually want to reconstruct this building. This is a pretty small building. The reason is there's an opportunity to add a drive-through vehicle washdown bay. This would, what we feel will help extend the life of all of our fleet, which will mean we can wait longer on buying new fleet vehicles and hopefully save some money. It will also give us, in terms of CARP, an opportunity to capture stormwater and reuse it for this facility. And then at James Park, to replace the recycling center, we would install a new storage facility at the southwest corner of James Park, kind of just behind the hill. And one thing just to note about this, because it's got a pretty high price tag, obviously, at 10 and 1/2 million dollars. The reason. The reason we feel it's such a high price tag is because there's very little out here at this corner of the park. There's no infrastructure, there's no roadway. And also, this is actually still on the landfill that's below James Park. So it probably requires deep foundations. So just something to keep in mind. So option two, this is the, obviously a much higher price tag. This option, we would renovate buildings A, B, and C. We would demolish and construct a brand-new and expanded building D, and we would demolish building F. And the thought here is that this new expanded building D is going to kind of address all of our storage needs. So everything at the recycling center, the recycling center yard, everything at D building, everything at F building. But it comes with a much higher price tag. So without CARP, it's around 84 million. And with CARP, it's around 96 million. So a much bigger investment. In terms of the improvements, again, a little bit more detail. The site improvements, basically identical to option one. The upgrades to building A, B, and C also basically identical to option one. The big change here is building D and F. So building D, we build a much larger building. It meets all of our storage demands. And of course, we would want it to meet all of our CARP requirements. And F, we eliminate it entirely because this expanded building D really takes the place. So just a summary here of the two options. Obviously, a big price change between them. The total cost for option one, if you do all these things, the base kind of scope of work, the CARP items and James Park, it's around 44 million. Whereas option two, base scope plus CARP items is around 96 million. So staff, our recommendation is, not surprisingly, to go with the lower-cost option, to proceed with option one. It just meet every single need we have, but we think it, it keeps us operating at the level we are now and, and it's something that we can, we feel is sustainable for us. And then, you know, it also offers another benefit. It eliminates the need, if, you know, if we were to reconstruct D building, where does all the D building stuff go while we're rebuilding it? So this eliminates all the complexities associated with that. And in terms of initial phasing, we want to start with replacing the north fuel system. That's already a budgeted project in 2022 and something that is really at the edge of failure. And then we want to talk with you folks about, you know, this public works storage area. Is it, can we keep the recycling center for that use? Do we want to build this new facility at James Park? And then continue to work with our consultant to develop a phasing plan to work towards implementing these improvements over time and also to coordinate it with the planned implementation of the fleet electrification. And happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? We begin with Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Slight headaches, so trying to stay focused, but why, I, I, so the recycling center, I think, is a neat idea. I think the new build-out of a, of a new storage facility space. If we weren't going to use the recycling center for this storage and we are going to build a new storage, why, why was this site chosen and maybe not looking throughout the city?
Why James Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. It's, you know, it's really hard to find a site here, really hard. One of the nice things about, let me go back to this. There's few things that I can say positive about this, but one nice thing about this is that it's because it's behind the hill and it's in an existing maintenance yard already, so there's a lot of our staff and crews already down there. And it's really hidden from the park. So it's not, it's not going to create a negative impact to the park. In fact, it'll probably clean it up because we can pave the road back to this corner. Right now, it's a dirt road. It's really, if you can kind of picture, as you're driving in the park toward the hill, the sleigh hill, it's not so great. So this is actually an opportunity to kind of clean that up. So I think it's a positive.
Yeah, yeah. I'd love to have you all at a ward meeting soon to discuss this and make sure that, you know, as we're rolling this out, I think if we're going to go, you know, there's a significant savings.
Of course.
It's almost night, it's almost night and day. So if James Park is the most feasible location, I think that, you know, that's where we are. And I'm, I'm sorry, when I'm looking at that, where is the recycling center now? Am I looking at it upside down?
No. Recycling center is right.
Oh, okay, it's on the other side there. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, okay. If the recycling center was to be the site, I presume that we may need to, I'm sorry, did I see the cost if we were just to move into the recycling center and not?
Well, we use the recycling center right now.
So that's not even an op-
It's, well, the, the concern has been over the years, there's a desire to repurpose it for commercial use.
If we weren't going to repurpose it, I know that-
But if we weren't going to repurpose it and we just continue to use it as, as a storage facility, it does need a little attention. And we haven't examined what attention it needs yet, but I'm, I'm certain it needs something because it's also a facility that has gone largely untouched for probably 20, 25 years. But it's, it's certainly not the same level of investment need that-
Sure, it'd be even, even, you know, it's quite a bit even lower than the A option, the lower option.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I mean, I, if storage is a, if it's this much of a need, it may, I would just love to see the numbers on, you know, if we were to sell the recycling center, what do we expect to get, both for the sale of the land and, you know, property taxes, whatever the case may be, over a, what is the life of this building? Maybe, what's the lifespan of a building like that?
Thirty to 40 years.
Yeah, so I'd want to know what the city would, what estimates of what we may receive in property taxes and other revenue over a 30-year period, let's say, to determine if, you know, it would just make sense for us not to sell the recycling center and use it as, as storage and save, you know, whatever, the, the $20 million. You know, so I'd, I'd love to see that analysis. And if that is the case, that it would be even, it'd be more, the balance would be better for us to make a small investment in the recycling center, keep it as is. I would love to also see, I know we're working on the animal shelter project and see if, you know, if we did something at a similar time and, you know, really even thought about that project a little bit differently, if we could, you know, create even more cost savings by addressing both those at the same time. And I see Laura is coming up to the-
Yes. Members of council, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. I just wanted to break in and say that one of the things that is a portion of the animal shelter project is trying to find a temporary location to house animals. And if we delay reselling the recycling center, even if we ultimately choose to do that, that is a good candidate for at least housing dogs during the construction of the reci, of the new animal shelter.
So I think you're saying that heck no, we can't do both at the same time? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I apologize. We, we actually sort of can because in order to house any animals there, because of the deterioration, that's just-
Oh, there would need to be some investment in the first place.
There would need to be some investment in the first place.
So you're saying?
So it is possible. We would not take the whole recycling center to house animals. It would still have a portion that would be available for public works. But it is one of the candidate sites that staff is seriously considering to bridge the animal shelter to the new building.
So I, I, that, you know, makes it even more appealing to me. I think we should just, I'm sorry, this, I would just love to see what, you know, if we were just to keep the recycling center as is, what, what the, what the dollar mountain would be then. I think that's all. Certainly, like I said, want to have community discussions about this. If, if we're going to do this in the eighth ward, so happy to have you at a ward meeting and then that analysis. And I think that is the limit of my questions right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reed touched on one of the issues that I was seeking clarification on. And so just to be clear, both option one and option two, as presented, include leaving the, the recycling center. Abandoning, exiting-
Yeah, yeah.
Making it available for some other use or selling it.
Making it available for some other use, yes.
So I do like what Councilmember Reed is saying about having some numbers to be able to compare options with regards to the disposition of the recycling center. So I'll second that. I also want to put in a word for, for full compliance with CARP, going all in on that. Just look at what's happening in the news this week with wildfires all over the planet and, you know, heat emergencies all over the country, all over the world. We need to do this. It's not a question of should we? We should. If, if we don't pay for it now, we're going to pay for it later. So I just want to make sure that we all, we're going all in on CARP. I know that at this stage in the game, it's really difficult to put a price on it and I'm not sure why the CARP number was that much higher. If we're talking about putting PV on city buildings, as we have discussed with the Robert Crown project, there's ways to do that that don't cost the city any money upfront. Don't need to get into those details right now.
No, agreed, agreed.
Great.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, thank you. Can we get this, this slideshow?
Absolutely.
That'd be great, thank you. Okay, that'd be terrific. So this would be funded with GO bonds, is what?
I, I think so.
Good evening, interim deputy city manager Dave Stoneback. Yes, sir, there are no other funding sources available for this. I don't think there's any grants or anything like that. If there were, we, we could apply for them, but yes, otherwise, I believe it would be GO bonds.
Okay, thank you. And so, and also, I think, was it, this is Greeley and Hanson, right, that did this?
That's correct, yes.
So they also did, part of the RFP required that they provide a, an evaluation and assessment, which I, I know isn't in the, in our packet here. Can we get that also?
Absolutely, yeah. We, we did post a draft of that online and we, you know, we definitely-
But not in this, in a different place?
Correct, correct, yeah. This link was emailed to city council, I believe, earlier today, so.
Okay, okay, it's in the email? Okay, great. Okay, and I just, I do wonder, just globally overall, I feel like our city, like in terms of investing in maintenance, that it might be worth our time to consider greater investments in maintenance. I just heard you say, you know, it's kind of for 25 years. And I know we have the issue with the civic center. Overall, I think it's not our folks who are in charge. I think they do great work. I think it's just about the money we're allocating for maintenance. I have a feeling we need to consider that at another point for another discussion, but...
Yeah, I think, and I think just something to keep in mind, too, we've actually, I think, done a, I mean, I want to give credit to the maintenance staff because they have really made this place go for a long time, a lot lo, some of the equipment, I can't believe how old it is. You think about like, how many 40-year-old cars do you see on the road? You know?
Right, no, it's beautiful. I've been through it and they do a beautiful job with what they have, but I think it's about us actually allocating the funding to be able to maintain it, maintain our buildings. And then in terms of like the CARP goals, it seems like, I don't know if also in their assessment, they provide the calculations, you know, reveal the energy saved and embodied energy and all that, what would happen with each one? Is that in the assessment also?
There is some information about that. There's two reports that we sent you a link to. So one is the kind of assessment of the kind of existing situation. And the second is CARP, like how do we deal with this? What do we do? What are the implications, et cetera?
Okay, the calculations are there, the estimates. Okay, thank you very much.
With no one requesting to speak for the first time, Councilmember Reed with one minute left.
I think I was going to echo Councilmember Kelly's. Didn't have a mic on.
Well, you've heard, Councilmember Kelly.
Sorry, so Greeley and Hanson, did they submit a condition assessment of all facilities? Or of all, I think it was, of all the city-owned buildings or no? A condition assessment?
No, no, just, just this, their focus is just this complex.
That was it? That was, the RFP was just for this complex?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Back to Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, sorry, I think Councilmember Kelly's voice reminded me of what it was. What I was going to mention is, just echo what Councilmember Kelly said about, I, I would love, I, I do think that it's apparent that, I think our maintenance staff is great, but I think this body has maybe not, and, and the community as a whole is not put forward the investments that we need to keep up with building maintenance. And so I would just, you know, as we're moving into, you know, 2023, 2024, and 2025 budget, that staff feel comfortable coming to us and, and letting us know what investments need to be made in maintenance. And, and I think it's, not now, but at a later time, really going to be time for us to have a real conversation with the community about what it actually will cost to run the kind of city that they expect to, to have. And, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I think we're going to have to get creative, certainly, but, you know, I think it's time to stop kicking the proverbial can down the road and really being honest with folks about what it's, what it's going to take to, to provide the level of service that we require and that they expect.
So obviously, you've gotten some direct feedbacks and follow-up questions. Do you have what you need at this time from council to prepare next steps and come back either to council or to APW with either a specific proposal or further, further discussion?
I think that the, the next step would be to bring back the report that was requested on the cost analysis of the recycling center. And then after that decision, then we will be looking for approval to redo the fuel system that's currently in design and-
Not yet.
It's not in design yet, but it's something that we, staff really feels needs to be, be accomplished in '23 because we're really afraid that the two fuel pumps that we currently have now are failing. I think we spent $150,000 over the last five years or so, just trying to keep them up and running. And it's frequent that one is down, we're only using one. If they both go down at the same time, we'll be, have a lineup at some gas station to try to get fuel and pay it a higher, higher dollars than what we currently are. And then after that, we would focus more on what is the next step for, I believe, option one. But knowing if we're staying in the service center or not helps to resolve that for us. So September 13th, we're hoping to come back with the cost analysis for the recycling center. I'd like to stop calling it the recycling center and take the signs down that said we'd close it in 2010 or whatever it was, and call it the public works storage area and then move on from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Very helpful presentation. This brings us to the consent agenda. Three items did not, as I understand it, at least three items did not make it out of committee, P2, P4, and A15. So those will be removed from the consent agenda. Furthermore, three additional items, A16, A17, and A18 are removed from the consent agenda so that simultaneous introduction and action can be pursued. Are there any other items that members would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
H4 and H5, please.
H4 and H5.
H6 as well, please.
H6.
Did we say A5?
What's that?
A5.
A5?
Yeah.
Yep, A5.
A, A3, P5, A3, P5.
A3 and P5.
Oh.
Any further items?
CM1?
Uh, CM1. Sorry, Councilmember Newsma, were you about to ask about something? So let me read the list I have. I have CM1, A3, A5, A15, A16, A17, A18, P2, P4, P5, H4, H5, and H6. Are there any additions to that list? Going once, going twice? Seeing, I believe, no other, um, addition, no, subtractions, I suppose. I would entertain a motion.
I move the consent agenda.
And second? Councilmember Nguyen moves the consent agenda with the exceptions of items CM1, A3, A5, A15, A16, A17, A18, P2, P4, P5, H4, H5, and H6. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Staffordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember News, um, Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda is passed. This brings us to item CM1. Would someone like to make a motion on item CM1?
I move CM1.
Second? Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the minutes of a whole slew of meetings, uh, delineated in item CM1. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion?
So it's about.
Councilmember Kelly?
Well, it was about seven, I'm sorry. It's about 70 pages, no? I think, I just, I, I couldn't get through all that today when I was trying to get through the whole, all the packets, so, I mean, could it be held just to have more time on that?
Uh, let me just ask our legal counsel, is there, is there any, is there any concern about holding this until the next meeting?
Well, we're late. We're late now. And so the clerk has done a fabulous job of trying to catch us up. We're in litigation over these things. Uh, so, you know, I think the, the clerk's done, um, everything that can be done to try and catch up coming out of COVID and the staffing challenges that the clerk's office, uh, had. So, yeah, we'll be later. We're late now. We're in violation of the act, and we'll be later by postponing.
I didn't realize that. I.
But the minutes belong to the body, so it's up to you whether to approve or not.
I see. I mean, there's just a lot to read on top of this whole packet. Um, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on item CM1? Councilmember Reed?
I'll just note that I, uh, am, uh, loving that this council has chosen not to politicize minutes and regular adoptions. So thank you, Clerk Mendoza, for bringing this up, and thank you, colleagues, for not politicizing this as has been done, uh, in the past, so.
So we're, did you say?
Councilmember Kelly?
I'm so sorry. We're facing legal issues now?
Uh, yes, we, we've had a couple of complaints that have gone up the chain for Open Meetings Act violations, in particular about, um, some minutes didn't have some citations for going into executive session, some minutes being late and not approved under the Open Meetings Act. So there are people watching your every step who have brought these complaints. Now, the good news is, is that the courts have said, when we get it fixed and done and we take care of these problems, then the issues moot and we don't have to do anything more. So to the clerk's office credit, they did a lot of work to catch up, and we'll see some more of that in closed session, too.
And so would there be an issue with just holding it till, I mean, would there be an issue? I don't want to cause any issues.
Again, the issue is, we'll be later. The February meeting from 2022 should have been approved in March. That it's now the end of July, you're late. You're just going to be later.
Okay, thank you.
Clerk Mendoza?
Councilmember Kelly, as you know, we've had some staffing issues in our office. Um, and we are doing our best to catch up and to, um, you know, do things as corporate counsel, Dirk Price has advised our office. So this is why these were submitted. Um, we're just following the advice of our corporate counsel and also catching up due to our staffing issues.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Staffordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and all of those minutes are approved. And thank you, Clerk Mendoza, for your and your team's diligent work to get all that prepared. This brings us to item A3. Um, would Councilmember Newsma care to make a motion on item A3?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A3, contract award with MKSK Incorporated for the Beck Park Expansion Project. This is RFQ 22-31, uh, in the amount of $105,111.
Councilmember Newsma moves passage of item A3. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Burns?
Just seeing that, uh, roughly $75,000 is to be funded from general obligation bonds. I just, I'm wondering if, if this is a ARPA-eligible expense or, I guess that's the first, well, that's my only question. It says 2022 general obligation bonds in the amount of $75,000.
Uh, City Council, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. I am not sure that this is ARPA-eligible or not. However, my understanding was that we did not set aside money for this type of improvement when we allocated the buckets.
It theoretically could come out, uh, revenue, lost revenue. Revenue replacement, but that money is being used up fairly quickly. So it could at the direction of the council, but then it will limit what other projects you can do with that money. That's the one funding area in our ARPA that allows you to use it as the council sees fits and doesn't need to be specifically tied to something.
Do we, um, have we committed any revenue replacement funds yet? Is there a document I can look at that shows, um, not only what, because I forgot how much we allocated towards that category, but, but also some of the committed projects?
Sarah Flax, Housing and Brands Manager. I can give you top line. Um, we, the council committed $12,000, $12,500,000, uh, for revenue replacement. And that was, when that was done, it was estimating what revenue replacement would be allowed based on our finances. Um, for 2020, our lost revenue was a little over that. It was, um, 13 million, not 12.5. Um, but again, 12.5 is what's allocated. Um, there has been, um, 850 and another million three that was allocated for, uh, vehicle replacement. There is, um, approximately $3,250,000, I think it was, for, um, parking fund, uh, which includes, thank you, Dave. Let's see how well I was remembering these. Um, I just have to get rid of this. Yeah, no, I just want to get rid of this. Yep. Uh, yep. So our parking fund replacement revenue is $3,250,000. Um, we have $500,000 for the comprehensive plan and strategic plans. Um, then we have a little over $2 million that is for budget balancing. That was, the council approved $4,250,000 for budget balancing. And so the comprehensive and strategic plans and the permit desk software have been the specific things allocated out of that so far. Um, we have been rehiring staff. Now technically, even though that was approved by council under the revenue replacement, when the final rule came out, they had a whole category that isn't under revenue replacement. So even though we're still tracking it under that category for purposes of, against our original approved budget, um, that will be taken out as a completely eligible cost. So we have probably about, hmm, three, close to four million of that that hasn't been allocated. We also, and this is something that Hitesh and I have just started working on, um, we are going to, uh, put in our 2021 revenue losses, and that will be in the range of 7.8 million. So one of the things that we want to do is bring this information to council because it really could have significant impact on how we allocate any of the remaining funds. So that's one of the reasons I've said we kind of need to take another look at it. There is possibility that we will also have revenue replacement in both 2023 and 2024, because we can keep reporting that, and Hitesh will be much better at estimating what that might be than I.
And so I guess I'll ask, Chair, if we can have that discussion sooner than later about how to use the remaining revenue replacement funds, that would be helpful. Uh, that is all.
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll just second that. That, I, I think that this is, uh, I'm certainly supportive of the capital improvements in Beck Park. Is that the park with the splash pad that we were talking about earlier? Yeah, okay. Uh, so certainly, uh, support, uh, support this, but, um, it's such a, in the grand picture, relatively speaking, small amount of money, that it would be nice if we weren't, you know, to me, it feels like, you know, taking out a loan for like a $75 payment, you know, that, or to pay a cell phone bill or something like that when you, you know, should just, you know, tighten the belt and budget for it. And so I, you know, if we, if there's a way that we can do this without bonding out and without putting the extra burden of paying, uh, interest on this particularly small amount of money, I'd love to do that. Um, and also, if neighbors and, uh, I don't know if this is included there, but if the neighbors at Beck Park, uh, don't want a splash pad, uh, then I'm certainly happy to have that at James Park. Uh, so I'll throw that out there. Uh, we, we are happy to do it.
We have a fourth ward park that would really be a nice place for a splash.
We're taking the, the recycling center and all the trash, we're getting a splash pad, too.
Is, is there any further discussion? Uh, all right, we'll, we'll install a splash pad in everyone, everyone's backyard. But in the meantime, uh, Councilmember Kelly?
So I just want to also, um, dovetail on the bond. I think, you know, finance and budget is really looking to advise against issuing any bonds right now, given the, the economy. So I would say if we can look for, um, another means of, of funding this, that would be preferable.
Point of information, specifically the finance, if that's fine, Mayor, the Finance and Budget Committee has, uh, thought about i- if it's a possibility to have a line of credit, uh, that's still, to me, not the greatest, but I mean, it's certainly, uh, seemingly potentially better than bonding.
Good evening again, Dave Stomack. Uh, we have the, uh, extra revenue in the general fund reserve, and if, uh, council believes that that be an appropriate place to, uh, have this funding come from, that's something that we could do. This is similar to the, the maintenance projects that we, uh, said we were going to sell GEO bond for that were, uh, instead we paid for out of the GEO reserves. We're also, staff is also going to recommend, uh, transferring about, I think, $2.5 million of GEO reserve to, not transfer, but use that instead of selling bonds. So we could clearly indicate that this is a project that could come out of that 2.5 that staff was recommending to use instead of selling GEO bonds, if that is the council's direction.
That would be preferable.
Point of information, when you say GEO reserve, are you, are you meaning general fund reserves? Or are you?
I'm sorry, yes, I mean, general fund reserves.
Okay, yeah.
If I said it wrong, I apologize. General fund reserves, we have, I think it was approximately $10 million over to 16.6% that we need to have. We've already allocated some of that for different purposes, uh, but staff was hoping to, to use 2.5 million of GEO re, G- general fund reserves to, uh, use instead of selling GEO bonds. So we could allocate that to this.
Do we need to, can we just get?
I would suggest that somebody make an amendment because the.
I'll move, uh, if, if, if this is something you think that we can handle without having to do any further analysis, I would agree. I mean, knowing that we have the, uh, you know, the maybe close to $15 million reserve, I, I would move that we, uh, take the, what is this, a total of 115,000 or 105,000? Uh, I, I move that we, uh, amend this to fund this, uh, the $105,011 out of the general fund reserve as opposed to GEO bond. Do not make me put this in writing.
You got to put this in writing. While, um, while Councilmember Reed reduces his amendment to writing, we'll go to Councilmember Burns.
There is a such thing as the GEO bond reserves as well, right? Uh, bonds we've previously issued that we haven't used yet? That's a thing, too, right?
There is, but I don't have those numbers in my head. I'm sorry.
Um, it just would be helpful at some point to understand those, what's in those funds, how much we have there, how much we have in surplus, especially understanding where there are limitations in how we can use the money. Like even today, I didn't necessarily know we could use surplus for this. And so just trying to get a better sense of, you know, uh, those three pots, I think, and, and how we can use it, um, uh, to, for projects and which projects make more sense for different funds. The, I mean, that would be really helpful.
You said three pots, and I, I think I only heard.
I think it's GEO bond reserve, let me see if I can get this, um.
General fund reserves.
General fund reserve and, um, revenue replacement out of ARPA.
Okay. And then we should, uh, without too much trouble, be able to give you an update on the GEO bond reserves, because we have done that in the past. There is a large amount of money there, but a lot of that is allocated to pay IDOT whenever they wind up sending us the invoice. And then, once we receive the invoice, we have 30 days to pay it. So we, we owe them millions of dollars from projects that were completed many years ago. Green Bay Emerson Ridge Project, we still owe them, I'm going to say roughly $3 million on that. We owe money from the Sheridan Road Project. We, they have staffing shortages, they've had COVID, they just haven't been sending out invoices. But when they do, you got 30 days to pay them. And that's why that money is sitting there, knowing that we have these invoices that are due. But we, we've narrowed the GEO bond down reserves, we don't have a lot of money flexible for that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. It's just understanding how much is, you know, committed to something already. And then for the unencumbered money, you know, what are some recommended uses, but also what are some eligible ways where we can use those funds in each one of those funds?
In the unrestricted, yes, okay.
Would be really helpful.
Yes, and we'll, we'll shoot for, we'll try for August 8th, but.
Beautiful.
Definitely September 13th if we don't make the 8th.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
So Councilmember Reed's amendment has arrived in writing. It indicates that the $105,111 would be funded, uh, from general fund reserves rather than GEO bonds. Uh, the motion was already seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I second by Councilmember Nguyen. Uh, my apologies. Uh, is there any discussion on the amendment? Uh, seeing none, will the clerk please take the role on the amendment to item A3?
Councilmember Staffordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor, none voting against, the motion carries and item A3 is duly amended. A3 is duly amended. Is there any further discussion on the now amended item A3? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes, and item A3 as amended passes. Thank you all. This brings us to item A5. Councilmember Nguyen, would you care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A5, Contract Award with Boulder Contractors Incorporated for Poplar Avenue Street and Parking Lot Improvements. This is bid number 22-43 in the amount of $1,356,923.20.
Councilmember Nguyen moves passage of item A5. Councilmember Nguyen seconds, is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
So as discussed in APW, a lot of residents on the Poplar area, Poplar Avenue area do have great concerns about this and would really love to have a, you know, one or two community meetings. And I know Councilmember Ravel is not here, and, you know, I texted her today, I wish she were here because I, I think that that really has to happen before going forward. I think you want to go forward with residents feeling that there has been input, and there really hasn't been. There were some flyers that went out, and like, two people showed up to a meeting, and I think the residents are just feeling very frustrated, and I, and I know it would go forward much more smoothly if there was a community meeting first, and I wish that, I feel like for a project of this scale where we've all received emails from residents who would like to stop for the moment until there's a meeting. So I also feel Councilmember Ravel should be here, so I, I'd like to see this held until Councilmember Ravel can be here and respond. I was hoping we could get ahold of her before this meeting, but, so I also, I know there's more questions, like, maybe, this is maybe separate of wanting to hold it for Councilmember Ravel, but why is the, just so I understand, the lead pipe only, I mean, the pipe being changed only for like, one or two houses on that? It's about four blocks total, no, that were.
Good evening again, Dave Stomack, interim deputy city manager. Right now, the, we have not gotten any federal or state funding for lead service line replacement. And so in 2022, we are only replacing lead service pipelines where we're required by state law to do so, and that is when you replace the water main, you must replace any lead services to the meter, and if the water service line, a lead water service line breaks, you must, you can't repair it, you must replace it in its entirety. So that's the, we have no additional funding, that's all we can afford to do in '22. We resurfaced plenty of streets in Evanston this year without replacing the lead service lines. A street will last 15 to 20 years. By state law, we're going to have 20 years to replace all lead service lines beginning in 2027. So we basically have 25 years from this date to be able, to be replacing all the lead service lines. So we anticipate having to resurface Poplar Avenue again before we are mandated to replace the lead service lines. We just don't have the funding to replace them all at this point in time. The water main that, the current water main that's on Poplar is old. Even if we replace the lead service lines, we might have to dig up the street to replace the water main. So there is no real advantage that I can see in replacing the lead service line on the blocks in which we are not replacing the water main.
Thank you. So I think what I've heard from residents that have emailed is, well, you know, eventually you're going to be digging up the street to do the water. I mean, nobody wants their street dug up, right? I mean, it's not, they're not asking for this, no resident on the entire strip of four blocks, I think, or five blocks has said, oh, our street, we want it redone. So this is being done, I won't say against, but they're definitely feeling frustrated. They just want to be able to sit down and have a community discussions about this. And so, given that the likelihood is eventually down the road, it's going to get dug up again to do the, I would just say, I mean, and again, I'm not speaking for, obviously, for Councilmember Ravel, but I feel this is really important for the residents to, it's not going to, nothing drastic's going to happen if we, you know, hold this so that she can be present and at least have, you know, schedule a meeting with the residents.
We, we've also been in discussion with the residents who are in favor of the project. We've worked out issues with several residents that had initial concerns about the parking and about how we were doing it. We changed our striping plan for the project to accommodate those. We've indicated how we're going to provide parking for residents that had a concern. We've addressed their questions about replacing the lead service lines. We did all this, making Councilmember Ravel aware of it. Councilmember Ravel has told staff that she's satisfied with our work and our modifications and the project, and was okay with us proceeding.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you just repeat that? You said the residents are in favor of this? I just, could you repeat that?
There are some residents are in favor.
Do you know about how many are in favor of this?
I don't, I know of the two that are complaining, but I.
I, I've gotten emails from five.
Okay.
And they're, I mean, and how many I even know about it? I mean, it's just.
Well, there's lots of people that know about it because they've seen us out surveying and measuring up and discussing with the alderman, in conversations with the alderman, I'm sorry, with the council member about what the proposed striping modifications would be. We, we've gone over this, and it's council's decision if they want delay. The potential of delaying is that, right now, the completion date is scheduled for the end of October. If we delay this two weeks, the completion date moves to the middle of November. You start getting into weather concerns about whether you'll be able to complete the restoration of the project or not this year, or whether some of the restoration would then be there so that next spring we'd be back doing final restoration in the spring rather than hopefully this fall.
Okay, so the, so there is a likelihood then, the street will get dug up again at some point, we just don't know when to finish.
20 to 25 years down the road, that's when you generally resurface streets anyway. So it's not because of the water main, it's just that's the age of the street that you would prefer to replace it every 20 years.
And could you just explain, I know there is some concern also about, since, I don't know if everybody got the email, but about the diagonal parking and.
Yes.
Which, how this is going to.
So there is currently parking on the east side of the street in front of the houses to, as we moved the parking lot off the Union Pacific Railroad property, about three feet, we therefore have to provide parking, the two lanes of traffic, and then we, we will lose parking on the east side of the street directly in front of the people's homes. So that's where they generally parked, and the commuters park on the west side of the street next to the railroad embankment. We're going to have spaces reserved within, at different locations closer to the homes. Ms. Biggs is coming up to correct me.
Sorry. So orig, we, we actually flyer the neighborhood because we were concerned about stripping the parking, although actually relatively few houses are impacted, and most of them occur on one block. And we didn't get much immediate feedback. When it became clear that it was an issue for this one block, we suggested that the proposed, the proposed solution was we would reserve spaces within the parking lot across from the houses where the residents could park instead of having street parking in front of their houses. This was inadequate for two of the residents, two of the property owners that were really concerned that that would devalue their property. And so the compromise was to create diagonal parking. Just geometrically, you don't need as wide of a space to back out of a parking space if it's diagonal instead of a 90-degree head-in parking situation. This allowed us to preserve the on-street parking so that the residents could continue to have that in addition to being able to shift the parking off of the Union Pacific property.
So it's one-way, one-way with diagonal? It'll be one-way or two-way?
It will be two-way.
Diagonal?
It'll be diagonal, but the, the geometrics don't care how many lanes, it's just a distance. And so two lanes can be accommodated with having the diagonal parking, so we're just going to leave it two-way street with diagonal parking.
But it will be diagonal parking as if you're coming north. So you, you wouldn't be able to come south and try to get in.
Other side, other way.
The other way?
Yeah. You have to come from the north to the south to pull into the diagonal parking. That is, that is a standard engineering and traffic decision that you don't have cars cross a lane of traffic to go into diagonal parking. It has to be the natural direction of the traffic flow that it's adjacent to.
So Councilmember Kelly, it wasn't clear to me, did you make a motion to hold in there?
Unless someone's able to get, I would be nice if we could get ahold of Councilmember Ravel to see if she would like to hold a community, go ahead. Councilmember Nguyen?
All right, so we'll, we'll go on then, at least for now. I think your, your comments inspired a lot of, a lot of desire to pipe up. So we'll go to Councilmember Burns, followed by Nguyen, followed by Reed, followed by Nguyen.
One, Councilmember Kelly, if the senders are open to this, please forward me those emails because I only received one. And it was, it seems like it was an owner of property in the area that did not receive the notice because it seems like that person does not, individual doesn't live there. And so this individual said that the tenants did not relay the message that, that this project was happening. So I would love to just take a look at those emails, that would be helpful. And then, I think that was, let me see if I have something else.
He can always come back.
I think, oh, and the last thing is, again, I think in these type of situations, especially when, when the, when the project is really going to create a lot of harm, typically flyering is enough. Again, I've done this for parking meetings and had, at least the same day, this, this resident flyer the area, and then that same day had about 10 emails of people mostly in opposition to what was being proposed. But when people are concerned about something, they'll, they'll reach out. And so that's why I was really interested to know how Councilmember, you know, Ravel has, what she's heard from, from her community members around this. I think Councilmember Nguyen is going to share a discussion that he had with her, but I'm willing to do whatever Councilmember Ravel is, is, wants us to do here. So it would be helpful to hear from her.
Councilmember Nguyen, followed by Reed, followed by Nguyen.
I don't want to put words in Councilmember Ravel's mouth, but prior to the APW meeting at which this was introduced, which I believe was July 11th, I did speak with Councilmember Ravel, and she indicated to me that she was comfortable with, with the neighborhood input on this project and had had some conversations and was comfortable moving forward.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Nguyen.
Yeah, I just, you know, want to add that, you know, obviously Evanston is not a city that has operated off of aldermanic prerogative. What happens in one ward matters in another, but with an issue as hyper-local and as, you know, kind of constrained as this, I too would defer to my colleague and trust their judgment on what they think their community wants. This is, it's fairly standard work. It needs to be, the road needs to be replaced. And so that's where my questions will, will go, I just have two. So one, this, the street resurfacing has to happen, right? This is likely a road that's in not great condition?
The road is not in good condition, but the real issue is that the parking lot is in poor condition. This was actually designed to replace the parking lot. Last year, we went out, got a really great bid price, and then concerns about the Poplar parking lot lease came up as Union Pacific began partnering with a developer, and we are paying far below the market rate to lease the property. The parking fund has gotten, parking manager has spent many, many years trying to get out of parking leases because there's been several situations with CTA, with YMCA, with the city leased a parking lot property at way below market rate and provided paid parking for commuters, only to have, at some point, the agency that had a budget problem decide they should start charging us market rate for the lease. And then the city was in a bad position of drastically raising the cost for commuter parking or losing money on the lease. So the parking manager asked us to redesign the project so that we would be able to shift that three feet. When there became an issue, we gave Councilmember Ravel a couple of different options. After talking to the different members in her community, she indicated very specifically to go with the option which is presented, which is diagonal parking.
Okay.
And maintaining the on-street.
And then, last question, how many spots, parking spots, do you know how many spots are available now, and then how many will be available after this, this change?
I do not have that number. I can look it up really quickly, but it is a reduction in approximately 30 spots, which is a 10 to 15% reduction in the number of commuter spots. However, it, the.
Do we know the utilization of the lot?
It is, it is very low right now.
Under util, yeah.
The other concern that the parking manager had indicated they wanted to push forward with this project, as had Councilmember Ravel, was that, right now, the parking lot is not that utilized. There's concern that if parking comes back and we have to shut it down to resurface the lot, that that's not actually a very commuter-friendly process. It would be better to reduce, to redo the lot now when it's not very utilized. Council manager, parking manager Rivera also indicate that he has identified a number of strategies if the parking lot becomes full, such as, with the current technology they use, they could make it so only Evanston residents could park there for commuter purposes. Currently, it's believed that it's also serving Womet and Skokie as well. So that there are strategies that could be used to serve the needs of Evanston commuters, even if the lot becomes filled up.
Okay, yeah, thank you, those, those are my questions. Thank you, Laura. I'm, I'm going to be in support, I would suppose, unless someone has some, you know, something else from Councilmember Ravel that says otherwise.
Councilmember Nguyen?
I'll just be very brief. If, it sounds like Councilmember Ravel has been very involved in this project, and I think that she is very good at paying attention to things that she would like to have removed from the agenda. She texted me just before she left the country and asked me to remove several items on the agenda and gave me her reasons why. So I think she would have informed one of us that this should be either held or removed. So I think we should go forward.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordin? Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and one voting against, item A5 passes. This brings us now to items A16, 17, and 18, all of which Councilmember Nguyen is seeking simultaneous introduction and action. Councilmember, do you want to handle that in a single motion perhaps?
Yeah, so I will move to suspend the rules to allow simultaneous introduction and action for items A16, A17, and A18.
Councilmember Nguyen moves suspension of the rules to allow that we both introduce and act upon items A16, 17, and 18 this evening. Councilmember Nguyen seconds, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordin?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the rules are suspended. Now Councilmember Nguyen, would you care to make a motion?
Yeah, I will move jointly items A16, A17, and A18, which our ordinance is 77022, 75022, and 78022 regarding liquor licenses.
Councilmember Nguyen moves final passage, which is to say introduction and action on items A16, A17, and A18. Councilmember Nguyen seconds, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and items A16, 17, and 18 are all passed. This brings us to item P5. Councilmember Burns, would you care to make a motion? Councilmember Burns, would you care to make a motion?
I move ordinance 34-022, amending Title IV, Chapter 14, Design and Project Review, DAPR, of the City Code.
Councilmember Burns moves passage of item P5. Councilmember Wynn, seconds, is there any discussion? Councilmember-
I think, as written, I would not support this. However, my understanding is that staff, because there is nothing in the code requiring them to meet publicly, they have already moved the DAPR meeting to, to an internal meeting. And so there's really no rush to do this. I think we need to spend a bit more, bit more time on this, to see if, if there's a better proposal that we can put forward, that doesn't eliminate as much as this would. But again, the main thing I want to highlight is, is there's no rush to do this. They're already meeting internally.
So are you proposing a delay on this item?
Yeah, I would say, you know, hold a table, whatever makes sense. But again, there's, there's no rush, let's, let's see if we can-
I would respectfully recommend against a hold, because that'll kick us to having the exact same conversation two weeks from now. I think if, if we want to take some time and see how the new thing works, I would table it for probably a couple of months.
Okay.
Or, or at least until, let's say until the first September meeting, we'll give it some time.
Yes, I'll table this and move to table this to the first September meeting? Okay.
Is there a second? So Councilmember Burns moves to table item P5 until the first council meeting in September, which I think is September 12th, but don't quote me on that. Councilmember Reed, seconds, is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, oh, Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, just really quick, so we're coming back again. My two kind of bottom lines are, I'd like to make sure that there is a public portion of the meeting. That's what I've received from the community, that they want to ensure that they still have an opportunity to give feedback with DAPR, or in the DAPR committee. And then, secondly, I'd also like to see DAPR no longer take votes, and just be more of a, you know, work with developers and whoever else to ensure that they are doing everything right, and they're, they're being, you know, successful as possible. But I don't think they should take actual votes. And so those are my two things that I'd want to see, and then that's how I can get to yes.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk take the roll on the motion to table this to September?
Councilmember Saffronen? Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes and item is tabled to the first city council meeting in September. This brings us to item H4. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion?
I move item H4, ordinance 67022, amending portions of Title IX, Chapter 5, Section 10, 1A, General Offenses of the City Code.
Is there a second? Councilmember Reed moves passage of item H4. Councilmember Herakakis, seconds, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk, Councilmember Reed, followed by Wynn? We can go to Councilmember Wynn first. Councilmember Wynn, would you like, would you like to go first?
Yes, I wanted to make sure that, that I understood what was going on here, that I wanted to make sure that we had not eliminated the idea of a fine for this. Because at the last one, we were talking about attempts to purchase, or attempts to purchase alcohol or cannabis products, if you were underage, and that we wanted to, there was a discussion about, that attempting should be something that we don't, you know, don't want someone turned down in one, one place, and then just go on to the next place. And so I do see here that we included an ordinance violation ticket and a $50 fine. So, and I wanted to make sure that that was what Chief Eddington, if he agreed with that. And he gives the thumbs up, thumbs up. So, yeah, so that, my curiosity has been, and concern has been satisfied, Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Oh, my fault. Thank you, that, no, no response then.
All right, seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll on item H4?
Councilmember Saffronen?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
You stepped out.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, item H4 is passed. This brings us to item H5. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I move item H5, ordinance 68022, amending portions of Title IX, Chapter 5, Section 10, -2, General Offenses of the City Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of item H5. Councilmember Burns, seconds, is there any discussion? Councilmember Wynn?
Yes, on this one as well, I wanted to check with Chief Eddington to, to understand if this was something that he would, if he had comments on, because I think the last time we were going through all of these, I have to admit, I got a little bit confused along the way. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of the council. My concern on this particular one, I just wanted to bring to your attention, that you are taking a tool out of the toolbox to combat underage drinking. We rarely use this one, but it is an available tool that I'm not sure that we, just as in the last ordinance we discussed, just so there is some sanction for attempting to acquire underage, liquor underage, that I think this sanction would be worthwhile to maintain, although it is rarely used by the department. Thank you.
Although this one is-
It's not that.
This one is the one where it shall be unlawful for any person under the age of 19 to be or remain in any room, apartment, house, place, or vehicle which is not licensed for the sale of alcohol or liquor, when such person knows alcoholic liquor is being consumed. So this, the concern here would be, what do we do when we have very large parties off-campus? Or, you know, or completely not related to Northwestern, just-
As a point of information, we're talking 18 and under, so I originally was thinking Northwestern students, but that would be 19 and 20-year-olds, which would not be covered by the sort of-
Well, this is age 19.
Right, so under the age of 19, so-
Okay.
So it's not necessarily geared towards Northwestern students.
Okay. So I did want to ask Chief Eddington what his opinion was of this one.
Again, it's a tool that will be used to control underage consumption of alcohol. And I am, my recommendation to the council would be not to give, not to give up the tool, especially in the context that we don't over-enforce it. It's, it's just another option that we have. And so I, I was concerned that a couple of these slid through without discussion last time, and I felt that my responsibility to bring it to the council's attention, to say, please consider what you're doing. I mean, we're, we're going to follow the direction of the council, but I'm not sure that we want to subtract this tool.
Can you give us an example of when, I know that you're saying that you don't overuse it, when you find it necessary to use this?
I, I think one of the better uses of it would be, we have a, let's go to Dillow Day.
Yeah.
When we tell everybody it's time to leave, they elect not to. We may or may not see them drinking, but we know there's being alcohol consumed. That would be a marvelous use for this particular ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Newsma.
Yeah, Chief Eddington, if you, if you will. So, I mean, this is, again, I don't want us to get lost. Last time we voted down not allowing people to put a bottle of wine in their trunk, because we were concerned about aggressive panhandling. And this time, it seems like we're going to vote down potentially an ordinance that... So what does someone have to do to violate this ordinance? Is it correct that someone, in fact, the person who would be charged with this ordinance isn't drinking, right?
Correct.
So the, the thing that we want people to do, which is not underage drink, is what we are about to crim, what our current code criminalizes folks for. And, and, and you just mentioned, for example, Dillow Day, and, you know, there is drinking going on, you know, there, and you see someone, does that mean if somebody pulls out an alcoholic beverage at Dillow Day, everybody there who's not drinking is now a criminal?
No, sir.
That's what our ordinance says, is it not?
No, that's not how it's applied. And I don't, I don't know why you interpret it that way, but once again, it's narrowly applied, sir.
If, if I can, if I can ask Council Price, if you're taking a peek at this, as, as a lawyer, this has a presence restriction. So if, if someone who is underage pulled out a drink at Dillow Day, or somewhere else, and everybody else there was not drinking, and, and they were under 19 years old, which, why 19 and not 20, not 21? Why this kind of arbitrary age of 19? So everyone under 19 presumably could be charged with being in, in presence.
Well, the intent of the, everybody else there, they've got to know that alcohol's been pulled out, and that it's present and being used. So the idea is that you're going to get to people who are knowingly showing up at a party where they're underage and alcohol's still present. In my experience, this is the, the problem, the social media problem, where rival high schools report pictures of kids at meetings, and there's beer and everything else in the background, and then it's, all these kids should be suspended because they were at a drinking party. And that's what the tool, the, the chief is talking about here, is, everybody sees the alcohol, nobody's leaving, they're all sticking around and staying. That's the knowing intent that you need to be able to cite them under this. The fact that we're all there drinking our sodas, and you pull out a beer, well, now we have choices to make, but we're not criminals in the instant that you pulled out the beer. We have to decide whether or not alcohol's being present and being served, and that's a knowledge thing. So to your point, we can get there ultimately, Councilmember Reed, with long enough exposure and enough knowledge of the people there, but it's not that dramatic, where as soon as somebody pulls one out, everybody's a criminal.
I'm sorry, but the language here, does it specify that you have to be aware?
Well, that's always the, any, any of these penalties, it does come down to a matter of knowledge and intent. You're not allowed to be dragooned into becoming a criminal by somebody else's acts that you're not even aware of.
I'm sorry, what page is this, is this on? What page you may be looking at?
958.
Thank you. It's a very long packet. Sure, okay, it does say the person has to know that alcohol is being consumed by people under 19. Again, I think this is a value statement for us. Do we want to criminalize 19-year-olds that are not breaking the law, right? They are not underage drinking. They are in fact just in a place where underage drinking may be taking place. I mean, is it now the job of every 19-year-old to go card everybody at the party, to make sure that everybody is over 21 who decides to drink a beer? And, because they can presumably, presumably be at a party if, if, is that correct, Council Price? That if, if someone over the age of 21 was drinking alcohol in this situation, that the 19-year-old would be fined to be in that place?
I suppose we could find, we could get to some sort of fact scenario like that, where that would be possible. And I guess, you know, the chief's point is, in the right circumstances, this would be a useful thing. But the idea is, yeah, this is about social host responsibility, not liability, but responsibility. If you're going to permit drinking, you need to be paying attention to who's under 18, under 19. So yeah, you need to be carding people. That's essentially the value statement here, is about social-
Yeah, but that would be someone hosting, but as, as a 19-year-old who goes to a party, I now have the responsibility to card everybody in the party, to make sure that I'm not in the presence of anyone that's under 21 drinking?
If you're going to hang out and you think that there's a reasonable suspicion that there are people under 19 at this party, yeah, you're running a bit of a risk under this ordinance. That's the idea, that people under 19 should not be at parties where alcohol's served.
I didn't, I didn't have the college party life, and so I've never been to it, or I don't think I've ever been to a college party, but-
I don't think this necessarily applies to a college party.
Well, it does, because if there's a, if there is a-
It, it does, actually, because the idea is that if there's a college party going on, and the high school kids crash it, the college kids need to be aware. And my wife, who grew up in Evanston, would tell you, she was one of the people who used to be able to go in, in high school and get the pony keg out of the frat party. So it does happen, and it's intended to be a tool for that purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I will say, underage drinking, and I'm sure my time is coming to an end, just, again, underage drinking is against the law, and you can hold the people who are drinking accountable for underage drinking. Just the idea that we're going to make 19-year-olds card everybody at a party to ensure, and we're not going to hold the people who are actually breaking the law accountable, I think this is overpolicing. I think, you know, it's the job of parents to tell their kids, hey, I don't want you at a party where people under the age of 21. I don't think it is the necessary responsibility of government to police kids who are not, who are not drinking themselves, and who are not engaging in what we would consider bad behavior. If their only crime is being in a party where some 19-year-old decided to take a sip of Heineken, and they didn't know, because they didn't card the person, it just, it seems ridiculous. And also, just to Chief Eddington's point, I had, I asked staff to compile information on the arrest, and so not only on arrest data relating to this-
Heads up, now your time actually is up, so please-
Okay, I'm going to say this last thing, because it's important here, that when it comes to, is this one of the ones that we didn't have data on? I may not have had data on this one, but I, I would, I think there are zero, there are three arrests, there are three arrests for this, in what, a five or seven-year time span?
Yes, Councilmember.
Yeah. It's rarely enforced, I think we can, I think we can, parents can ensure that their kids aren't, aren't doing this on their own, without criminalizing against someone who is not engaging in underage drinking, doing the exact thing we want them to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Newsma, followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this came up last time, I was kind of reading it wrong, and, and thinking college students, 19 and 20-year-olds, and leaning against, leaning in favor of making the proposed change, because why would we want to, you know, why would we want to try and restrict college students from partying, because they're going to do that anyway? I was reading it wrong before. This really applies to high school students, more than college students. Eighteen, up to and including 18 years old. So it's, it's really underage drinking at the high school level, we're talking about that. Under the age of, of 19, like, which would be, would you be 18? Which would include, you know, most college, or most high school seniors, and, you know, college freshmen, you know, maybe, I turn 19 April 3rd of my freshman year in college. So that's my point of reference. As someone who has kids that are going to be in high school before too long, I like the idea of there being a legal mechanism in place for the police department to address underage drinking. And I would not want to take a tool out of that toolbox. I think this would help protect my kids and protect other kids. That's all, thanks.
Councilmember Burns?
I was going to offer to Councilmember Reed as a suggestion that this be something referred to the Alternatives to Arrest Committee.
Yeah, if-
You can make the motion if you want, it's just a, because I think it's one of those things that- things that we need to run through the list of different scenarios on the spot. I think Chief Eddington is coming up with things that are top of mind, but as the chief comes up with scenarios, there may be other tools in the toolbox if we did a thorough review of our code that could address each scenario that the chief or one of the committee members could come up with. And then at that point, we could move forward with a lot more consensus that I think we'll reach tonight. So as a suggestion, I think this could be a good one for the Alternatives to Arrest Committee.
Point of information, Council Price or Chief Eddington, this is something that someone could be arrested for, right? Like, put in handcuffs, taken down to the station? There's nothing here that bars the police department from arresting, again, putting in handcuffs and taking down to the station a nineteen, almost 19-year-old?
No.
No.
No, there's nothing that bars us from doing it.
Yeah, yeah, so this is an arrestable offense. So I would move to.
So you're not recognizing your time's up, so let's go to Councilmember Nguyen first.
Well, I think I'm the only one up here on the dais, amazingly enough, who has had teenagers, who, growing up in this town, and I'm happy to have the police have something in their toolbox to break up some of the parties that I know my kids have been at and have come home from because the police arrived. So the police may not have arrested them, but the police certainly sent them on their way. So I like relying on our police chief, who I think has done an excellent job, and leaving a tool in his toolkit. And I think we should take his advice on this.
So, so your time is up. If you want to make a single motion, I'm happy to recognize you for that.
I will make a motion to refer this to the Alternatives to Arrest Committee. Again, just to create an alternative avenue to arrest, I don't know if we need to be arresting young folks for this, maybe it can be a ticketable offense as opposed to an arrestable offense. I'm sure you wouldn't have appreciated your kids coming home in handcuffs when they weren't drinking, if they were just at a party and weren't drinking, I'm sure.
Is this a motion?
That is a motion, yes.
So Councilmember Reed moves to refer this item to the Alternatives to Arrest Committee, which, just for full disclosure, Councilmember Reed informed me recently that the committee still exists, it's kind of defunct, so it would have to be, I think, a minimum reawakened, perhaps even repopulated, but certainly it exists, so this is a motion that's in order. So Councilmember Reed moves to refer item H5 to the Alternatives to Arrest Committee. Councilmember Burns, seconds. Is there any discussion on that motion?
If I can just ask my colleagues, I know that there is hesitation on this, and I know that people want to make sure there's still tools in the toolbox. I think we can have a further discussion, and I'm hoping that we can start a new culture of trying to get to yes and examining things thoroughly. And so I just ask that we be granted that ability, that's all.
The clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Saffron?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
So with three voting in favor and three voting against, we have an unusual type of tie. I'll happily vote yes. I want to be clear in that I don't have clarity on the future of the Alternatives to Arrest Committee. Again, it doesn't, at this time, doesn't have a chair, it doesn't, it's underpopulated. I don't know that it has, I don't know, I'm not voting yes with, in an effort to make a, establish an expectation about what the future of that committee is, but I'm happy to send this item to that committee. So with four voting in favor and three voting against, the motion passes and this item is referred to the Alternatives to Arrest Committee. That brings us to item H6. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion on item H6?
I move item H6, Ordinance 69022, amending Title IX, Chapter 5, Section 10, 3, pedestrians Under the Influence of Alcohol and Drugs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of item H6. Councilmember Burns, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes. On this, this ordinance, I think that there's language here that is, and I thought this last time, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up, is too vague. Under 9, 5, 10, 3, Section 9, dash, 5, dash, 10, dash, 3, it says, "A person who is under the influence of alcohol or any drug to a degree which renders himself/herself a hazard shall not walk," and this is the provision, I think is much too vague, "without adequate assistance to reasonably mitigate the hazard, or operate a bicycle, motorized scooter, and any other personalized propulsion means of transport carrier upon any public right-of-way." I agree with all of that, except "without adequate assistance to reasonably mitigate the hazard." There are so many vague words in that, in that phrase. I would make an amendment to strike that phrase. Make a motion to amend.
Is there a second?
Because it's, I think it's too vague. Once again, last, last time we went through this, I kept thinking, what's adequate assistance to reasonably mitigate the hazard? That's unenforceable. I don't know what it means.
So is there a second to the motion?
Well, if it fails, it fails.
I will second that, but I, I'll second that, but I do have a question.
So Councilmember Nguyen makes a motion, which has been seconded by Councilmember Newsma, so the next item on our agenda is to have Councilmember Nguyen put the motion in writing. While she does so, Councilmember Reed will be next, followed by Councilmember Newsma.
I'm happy to refer to Councilmember Newsma first, and then be able to answer any questions that.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Reed, with your permission, Mr. Mayor. So either with or without the phrase "without adequate assistance to reasonably mitigate the hazard," whether that's there or not, or I guess if it's not there, it would be illegal to walk down, to walk on the sidewalk if you're drunk.
Correct, which is, which is why I wanted to add that, I mean, I made the referral, and so that was mine.
Right, so I have no problem with the bicycle, the scooter, and the other means of transportation. We don't want drunk people, you know, scootering down the middle of the street. But if you're at a bar and you realize you've had one too many and you don't want to drive home, what then is your option?
You can take an Uber.
I spent my last money on the beer. Right, I'm a 21-year-old college student who just turned 21, I have no more money, I, like, I should be able to walk home. Right. So I don't, you know, I don't want to incentivize people to drive home. It'd be great if they could take an Uber or afford a cab, but we can't mandate folks to avail themselves of a service, so.
We can, we do all the time.
Anyway, I do, I do have a problem with making it illegal to walk drunk.
Hold on, it wouldn't be making it illegal, it was already illegal. This was, this is, again, the underlined portion is what I am adding, what my amendment to add to the code. So it was already illegal to be drunk or under the influence of any alcohol or drug and walk down the street. That's the ridiculousness that I was trying to fix. And so I'm happy to, you know, make this language clear. You know, my idea is that, you know, adequate assistance, I think, can, like, I don't think that's a complicated thing to figure out. It's like, is this person falling over sloppy, you know, drunk, and are they causing a hazard? And if they are, then maybe they shouldn't be walking down the street. But if they have a friend with them and the friend is helping them walk down the street and making sure that the person is fine, then they're fine to walk down the street. There's no way to really mitigate the danger on a bike, or scooter, or anything else, but certainly with walking, you're able to, you know, have a friend or something that would help you not be dangerous.
Is this the only place in our code where we address public drunkenness? Is this it? Is this the drunken public clause of city code?
Can I just point out that it's actually someone who is making himself or herself a hazard? Not that you're just too drunk, I mean, that you've just walked out of a bar and you're drunk. It's making yourself a hazard, shall not walk, or operate a bicycle, motorized scooter.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
So there's, there's a lot happening at once. First of all, I just want to report to the council that the amendment has been received in writing precisely as described verbally by Councilmember Nguyen and forwarded to all of council, so that's now, that's now been done. Thank you, Councilmember. I believe our Corporation Council has a comment here.
Yes, in addition to the, as Councilmember Nguyen noted, that it's about being a hazard, it's also upon the public right-of-way, which does not include the sidewalk. It's about being in the street. So we don't want you walking in the street.
Sidewalk is not public right-of-way?
It is, but the street is also public right-of-way.
It's, well, this is about, as I read this ordinance, about being in the street. The public right-of-way is typically the vehicular traffic. The sidewalk is part of.
That's the public right-of-way? Because if I was blocking the sidewalk, I could be.
Well, I don't, we're not allowed to ride motorcycles on the sidewalk anyway.
The road is also the public right-of-way.
The public right-of-way extends from lot line to lot line, so it includes both the sidewalk and the street. And this is saying you can't be under the influence of alcohol and be a hazard, whether you're walking on a bicycle, motorized scooter, or any other personal propulsion means of transport. If you're on a sidewalk or in the street.
But I think you may have addressed my concern by pointing out the hazard clause.
Right.
If you just had one too many, you can walk home and you're fine. If you're causing a disturbance, then you're a hazard, and then they can, and the sheriff can put you in the drunk.
I agree with all that. It's without adequate assistance to reasonably mitigate the hazard.
Right, so can, let's move then to our next speaker, is Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I, one, I mean, if without adequate, without adequate assistance to reasonably mitigate the hazard doesn't make sense, then what does it mean to be a hazard? How do we define, define if someone becomes a hazard from their drunkenness on the sidewalk or out in public? So I mean, to me, that's just as vague as, if anything, this, I think it's very easy for someone to say, look, you are not a hazard, you have someone who is assisting you as you're walking, that very clearly you are not a hazard to the public.
Can I jump in? Is there somebody ahead of me?
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I just want to say, I don't have everything up right now, but if that's referring to someone under the influence when they're walking, to me, that makes perfect sense. I mean, Councilmember Reed just provided the obvious example. If there's someone with you that is taking care of you, you're under the influence. And I don't know if that's also associated with being a hazard, well, you know, because the hazard is obviously being abated by the fact that you have someone with you that's taking care of you, and that makes sense to me. That's not vague at all. That makes, within that scenario, that makes perfect sense to me, and I'm sure there's other scenarios that we can think about, but that's probably what it was intended to.
I can tell you as the writer of this, yes, that's what it was intended to.
Okay. You put that in? I thought that was in it before.
The underlined portion?
No, the part that, that she's, that she wants to strike.
Yeah, I thought I put that in there.
Okay, well, yeah, that, to me, that makes sense. I don't see how that's vague.
I'm sure there is, we just need to ask.
Okay, there's, I want to make sure that we're all sort of having one orderly discussion here. There's, I don't see any further, anyone further seeking recognition to speak.
I would, if I could.
Is that, are you seeing?
Yeah, just very quickly.
All right, so Councilmember Reed, go ahead.
I'll just say, I think I know where Councilmember Nguyen stands on this. Councilmember Newsma, if you're also a no on this, or you need to strike that language, which I think is language that is reasonable to help not arrest someone who has taken reasonable steps to mitigate the fact that they'd be a hazard, then I would just rather send this to Alternatives to Arrest, so we can have a more thorough discussion, but I think we can adopt this. So I'll make a motion now to refer this to Alternatives to Arrest.
So, so Mr. Price, just help me out here, is, so there's a motion to amend on the table, is a motion to refer this to a committee in order while that motion to amend is still on the table?
No, we don't know what we're referring yet, so we got to get through the motion to amend, and then we'll send it, I think, to the referral. The referral is one of your unique orders.
And then, literally, the one above it is referred to a committee, latter of the motion, or Frank, so it would be, I can show this to you.
Your, Robert's rules is being, is being, is being brandished, so one of the two of you discuss this, and then we can move forward.
No, I agree, but I think there was a thing about, remember, I've only had these two weeks. Oh, what's that for? Oh, I got you, all right. Okay, here it is. Well, you really have some motion in substitution, but I'll go, I'll go with you instead. I'm seeing it as. All right, I was seeing Councilmember Reed's motion as a motion in substitution, but we'll call it a referral to a specific committee, and we'll, and we'll take Robert's rule as the more specific rule over your 18.8, and so, yes, his motion is in order.
All right, thank you for that clarification. So just to, you know, give a little bit of a tour of the map of the world we find ourselves in, Councilmember Nguyen made a motion that received a second to amend this ordinance, and now Councilmember Reed is making a motion that supersedes that motion to refer the item to the Alternatives to Arrest Committee. Was there a second to Councilmember Reed's motion?
Second.
Councilmember Burns, seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer this item? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Kelly.
I don't know where, Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Nguyen, no. Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
And with the opportunity to break what may be my last ever three-to-three tie, I vote aye, and with four voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries and the item is referred to the Alternatives to Arrest Committee, where it will await the determination about the fate of that committee. That concludes our agenda. This brings us to call of the wards, Councilmember Saffron. Councilmember Reed.
Ward newsletter hopefully is going out tomorrow. I'm still trying to figure out how the schedule, we're likely going to have to reschedule our ward meeting for this month because of the city manager town hall, so for the thousands of eighth warders who are watching this right now, so you know, that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Nguyen?
The third ward town hall meeting, which is scheduled for this Thursday, will be rescheduled to be, to a date to be determined. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly, again.
Tomorrow evening, we, I'll be holding a community meeting.
Tomorrow evening, we, I'll be holding a community meeting to discuss and hear about the 18-story proposed building at 1631 Chicago Avenue at 7:00, online. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fourth ward office hours and fourth ward meeting will not happen in August. We're taking the month off. See everybody in September.
Councilmember Burns?
No report.
And with that, Councilmember Newsma is recognized for a motion.
Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120/2A, Sections C1 and C21.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves that the city council resolve itself into an executive session to discuss the aforementioned items. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffronin? Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 10:24 PM, the council resolves itself into an executive session to begin immediately in the Councilmember Library.